We call this regular meeting the order. Call roll.
Mayor Querom.
Here.
Councilmember Swanson.
Here.
Mayberry, Fabia.
Here.
Newman.
Here. Please stand and join us in the board of business.
(inaudible)
Okay, we'll go to councilmember Newman for approval minutes. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the minutes from our regular council meeting on September 4th, 2018.
Second.
Motion's the second. Any comments, corrections? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Querom.
Aye. We'll go to approval invoices to City Park Nelson.
Okay, in the Department of Accounts and Finances for this period, we have invoices totaling $181,113 of what we've been spending. In the Department of Streets and Public Improvements, we have invoices totaling $384,618 and 54 cents. In the Department of Public Safety, we have invoices totaling $115,413 and 82 cents. And then in the Department of Public Property and Utilities, we have invoices totaling $792,102 and 58 cents. Mayor, all councilmembers present have confirmed their reviews of all invoices and now are submitted for disposition.
Now will we approve the invoices as presented?
Second.
Motion's the second. Any comments or corrections? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. We do not have any regular business tonight, but we do have an edge novel from the CEO of Paranormal Hospital is going to give us the yearly financial report.
If not, I'll be your clicker.
You may want to turn the first switch on the panel.
Yep. This might work.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to share with what's happening at Paranormal Hospital. One of the things that we always try to make sure that we start all our conversations with is what's the mission of the hospital. We're here to provide compassionate, quality health services to the community. And we always share that again with our staff as well to remind them of what it is, what we're about. One of the things that we've also done is identify what our values are at Paranormal Hospital. So we've identified excellence, respect, community, and service. And when we talk about excellence, it is about the care that we provide, the quality of that care. Respect is how we treat each other. Community is our involvement in our relationship with the community and how we work with the community. And service is about the patient experience. We also like to focus on what's going well. So we start out our meetings having a discussion about what is going well. And this is a way that we are able to make sure we're focusing on the positive, not that we don't look at what's challenging to us, but it's that reminder that there are a lot of positive things happening. So we'll share a lot of wins tonight, but we'll also talk about some of our challenges as well. We also direct how we look at things at Perry in what we call pillar areas. And so one of our pillar areas is quality. We recognize when we're going back to our mission statement that the reason we're here is provide quality health services to the community. We recognize when some of our staffs go above and beyond what it would be considered normal. Jan is our cardiopulmonary nurse, and she recognized that a patient was having abnormal symptoms. She was able to quickly get that patient in, and he ended up with open heart surgery immediately and saved his life. That's the kind of quality services we provide on a day-by-day basis. And this is just an example of when you really think about it from that specific patient's In order to continue to make sure that we're doing a good job with cardiac care, we did receive a grant this year for up to $3,000 for new equipment to train our staff with CPR. In the past, we, basically, they went CPR training once a year and never practiced again until need came up, which many times it does, but there are many times it does not. So we now have equipment that actually they're able to practice on a regular basis, which gives them immediate feedback on their procedure in providing that care. So this was implemented this year. A major investment that the hospital did this year is a new electronic medical record. It was over a $3 million investment. We decided to do this based on many factors. We reviewed our old electronic medical record system that had been in place for 20 years. We identified its inability to continue to grow with the current method of providing care, the current safety things we need to make sure we had in place. So we did analysis of it and made a decision to proceed to a new electronic medical record. We then evaluated several different electronic medical records and did select Cerner as the new system for us. In addition to the actual electronic medical record, which houses the patient record, we also transitioned to a new PACS system. PACS is where you keep your imaging, so radiology, x-ray, MRI, et cetera. We did a new HR system and a new financial system. All of this is because of how the old systems interacted together. All of these are advancements over what we had. Like I said, it was over a $3 million investment into the future of the hospital. This includes many safety features that our old system did not, including, for example, barcode scanning. So after a physician writes an order for a patient's medication, the nurse, when they go to deliver it, are able to scan the patient's wristband and then scan the actual medication. And then the system will let them know if there is a difference in what the doctor ordered compared to what is actually being held in that nurse's hand. This is a safety feature that is very important. As we know, more and more medications have similar names, have more and more challenges to being able to identify them. So this is a major safety improvement. It also has lots of other alerts that are built into the system that we can build into the system as well to let us know certain things about a patient. It can help us to know when they need chronic care management of different conditions. The other aspect of this system compared to our old system is in the old system, if a patient was just being, was being seen in the clinic and they came to the emergency room, the emergency room may not actually be able to see the entire record of what that history was from the clinic. And that's not the case with the Cerner. The patient's record is a patient's record in our system now. So no matter where they receive care from us, we have access to their record. In addition to that, the Cerner record actually interfaces with other records. So if a patient is being seen at another hospital, we're able to get access to that record through this system. So it's a significant improvement for many things in our, how we take care of our patients. So that is the reason we did it. We did involve our staff. This actually was a selection based on what they recommended after reviewing the many different types of EMRs that are available. So we made the decision, basically, in May of last year, did a kickoff in June, and spent a year getting ourselves ready to go live. So we're not live in May of this year, May 21st. And it has been a lot of work, a lot of recognition needs to go to the staff for the work that they have done to implement this, but it has been a very positive implementation with our clinical care. One of the aspects that, from the Cerner implementation, that we did not do well with our old system as well, is what's called the portal. So this is where the community can actually access their own medical record. In our old system, they can see lab results, and that was it. In our current system, they can see their lab results, their radiology results, their summaries of their visits. So if they go to the emergency room, there'll be a summary of what they came in for, what the diagnosis is, what medications they received for that visit. Same thing with clinic visits, et cetera. So they have a lot more access to their own electronic medical record. If they are seeing a Perry employee provider, they also have the ability to message their provider in this system. So they can send requests for prescription refills, they can send requests for appointments. They can actually just ask a question, and all that can be responded within the system directly to their email. So it's a way to improve communication. Some people may say the email's not improving communication, but I will guarantee you that most of our population is using it today. So it is a much easier, quicker way for them to get access to their provider with questions that they don't feel like they have to actually be speaking to someone for. The person's able to enroll in this during, when they come and register at the hospital. One of the features that, you see it's crossed out on there, it is coming, which is online bill pay. So through the portal, a patient will actually also be able to pay their bill. We've got some more background pieces to get set up in that particular component of it, but that will be coming in the future with this. As we begin to talk about quality, we implemented this year what we called the Good Catch Program, along with Safety Champions. So we always need to be proactive in making sure that the care that we provide and that there's not even environmental issues that might cause risk to our patients. This is about having a culture of safety, making sure that we are recognizing that. So staff are actually, we are asking them to recognize potential errors or potential risks that then, we then try to work on and fix. So it's called a good catch because we catch it before it actually causes harm, and we are able to work with our staff to make improvements. It actually brings an ownership and accountability back to the work area. It's not about managers coming around saying, "Be safe." It's about employees in the area saying, "I think that this might cause a risk, and so let's do something about it." So it's really about teamwork. So that is a new program we started this year as well. As we continue to grow and work on, again, more safety issues, the pharmacy required renovation this year in order to maintain safety standards for hood and ventilation. So our pharmacists mix toxic chemicals as they prepare on medications. The chemicals, the toxic chemicals and medication may not be the same thing, but yes, they often are the same thing. And so we want to make sure that they're safe as they're doing that. So we had a worth $400,000 renovation project that we did, and our Paranormal Hospital Foundation did assist us with that project. From a quality perspective, we currently are sitting at a three-star. That's not where we want to be. We believe we can be a four-star hospital, five-star hospital. So we are continuing to work on that. Many of our metrics are considered within national ranges, but they don't necessarily exceed national ranges. So we are working towards trying to improve that. So let me skip over to another area, which is growth. And you'll see, this is the list of providers that work at Perry. And all the red are new providers to us this year. So we did do significant growth. A couple of those names may not seem new to the community, but they were new to Perry. There were physicians who ran independent practices. They were no longer able with the current environment to maintain independent practices, so they did join Perry. So that would be two of them. Other than that, they're all otherwise new providers to our communities as we expanded our services to our community. We opened clinics in Walnut and Henry as part of our footprint of primary care as well. In addition to having providers, we also have specific services that we have added to the community as well. The pick lines is a place, a port that's put in to allow medication delivery to the patient that has to have repeated deliveries. We started the diabetes education program. This, we're in the process of getting that certified through Medicare. And we also started a wound care service. And as of this Friday, we, in addition to the certified wound osteomy nurse that staffs our wound care program, we'll have a physician one morning a week to be a part of that program. One of the things we'll continue to see for trends in healthcare is the transition to outpatient. Eighty-six percent of the care we deliver is outpatient compared as versus the inpatient care. Then looking at our statistics, inpatient days were down eight percent this year. Again, that is a trend progression from a healthcare perspective. But our surgeries are up 12 percent, our special procedures, which have been osteomy and pain services, up 6 percent. Our clinic visits up 10 to 20 percent, depending on which clinic you're talking about. And ambulatory care visits, where we do outpatient nursing care, was up 18 percent. Talk a little bit about our people. We have gotten, want to reinvest into our staff. We started a new program this year called the SOAR program. This is considered a nurse residency program. The nurses in this picture are brand-new nurses, and they attended a class. Marsha Hartland is the instructor for the program, in which they got opportunity to get deeper into learning things about critical decisions that they need to be made, how do they communicate those with the providers, et cetera. So this was a full-year's program in which the four of those graduated felt like they really were able to strengthen their knowledge as new nurses. Part of the program is for the patient's safety, for the staff's knowledge, but also it's about staff retention as well. We, one of the things that actually, again, we're seeing across the nation is nurses, young nurses aren't necessarily even staying in healthcare. They're becoming nurses and then quickly being disillusioned by nursing because of the challenges in nursing care. So this is a program to help, to help them feel stronger in their skills and their ability to stay within nursing. We also want to recognize the excellent care that our nurses provide. So we started, we joined a part of the DACE program this year. DACE is a program, is actually a national program that recognizes excellence in nursing care. Was started by a family whose son, son, husband, brother, sister, or brother passed away from cancer. And they recognized in his last days, his very short term from diagnosis to passing. And in those days, they recognized the excellent care that the nurses provided. So they created the DACE Foundation to recognize excellent nurses. So we've adopted this program, and so every quarter, a nurse is recognized as a DACE Award winner. The part that I think that I like best about the DACE Award is these people are nominated by the patients. It's not about something that we pick as hospital. It's actually nominated by the, their patients. And the number of nominations we get each quarter is just growing, and it's just wonderful to be able to read these nomination letters and what these nurses have done to touch people's lives. In addition to recognizing our staff and developing our staff, we know that a good organization has to have strong leaders. So part of what we've done this year is we've developed leadership development institutes. This is about us committing to leading and committing to learning how to be better leaders. Type of topics we worked on this year with our leaders were crucial conversations, critical access, hospital financial management, just culture, which is another program where we really focus on what are process issues, not people issues. Leader evaluation manager. This is actually another thing where we actually lead by objectives. Each of our leaders are given goals to work on throughout the year, and then they create 90-day action planning around those goals. And then we monitor those through their leader evaluation manager. And then the action planning is another education that we did to assist them with that. We have some additions to our executive team this year. Joining us was Deborah Mae Rickard. She is our new chief nurse, the vice president of clinical services. She joined us last July, actually, as an interim, and then because of the wonderful things she felt we were doing at Perry, has chosen to stay on with us as a full-time person. She comes to us with about 30 years nursing experience and is an excellent quality clinician and really working well with the nursing staff to help them to make sure that we're providing excellent care to our community. In addition to that, we had a transition in our financial services, and Mark Mularkey is our new chief financial officer, vice president of financial services. And shortly, he's going to talk to you about our audit report. And talking about next section, which we talked about service. So I mentioned the three-star under quality, but actually, under patient care, patient experience, we score a four-star. This is the ratings that come to us from the CMS website. So we, our patients in the inpatient, the ED, and the outpatient surgery all complete a survey on us that is developed as a national survey. The four-star actually reflects the inpatient care, and this is, and actually, an improvement that we have made over past, in the past, most recently, we were a three-star hospital. We're now a four-star. How do we get there? We really focused a lot on communication. That's the number-one key to having the right patient experience. So we start out with what's called ADED. We taught our staff this process. So we should always acknowledge the people we're speaking to, introduce ourselves, they should understand who we are, what role we have in their care. How long is something going to take, or how long are they going to have to wait for something? And then the explanation. The explanation is really one of the key pieces of this. Why are we doing this? What difference does it make to your care, and how should you be involved in that? And then we always end with the thank you. We recognize that people have choices, and we are very pleased when they choose us at Perry. Part of the ADED is really, again, who we are. Do we know what we're doing, and do we care about you? So the other components that we worked on to try to improve that patient experience is what's called inpatient hourly rounding. Our staff on inpatient are in the patient's room during the day, every hour. They all sort in the rooms every, in the nighttime, about every two hours, depending on that patient's care and their need for sleep and other services. One of the things that, as we talk about the leaders' involvement in this, is our leaders do round on our patients to validate this. We ask our patients if our staff are doing this, how well they're using their ADED, introducing themselves, and explaining. That's all part of being better leaders. The other thing, again, we talked about executive and leadership rounding. So the executive team rounds on the inpatients in addition to the leader of that department. We also round on all our staff. It's a regular thing. Our department directors round on their staff, each, getting to each staff member about monthly. And then the executive team rounds throughout the hospital, throughout the weeks. We come in on the weekends, we come on off shifts, et cetera. Then again, it's an important part of our staff knowing what's important to us. The other thing we've implemented this year is called standards of behavior. This is about, when I talked about our values, the staff, actually, is a group of staff that wrote our standards. And what they did is they looked at each of our values and said, "How does that look? What does it mean when we say respect you? What do you actually see from us from a performance perspective?" And they've identified that for us. And then they rolled that out to our staff. All of our staff has signed up on this as the behaviors that they will demonstrate for us at Perry. In addition to our staff writing one, our physicians also wrote one as well. Their work is just a little bit different than the staff, but yet their behavior still needs to represent the respect and care that we have for our community. So they also have written standards of behavior for them and how they will communicate and have agreed to try and follow that as well. So those are the things, again, I mentioned the ADED. The just culture part is that when something doesn't go right, we really look at the process, the issue of the equipment, or whatever it may be, rather than saying, "You made a mistake." It's not about the person making mistakes, it's about what is our situation that may have caused that mistake. It may have been a person, but we always look at the process first, and that's what a just culture is about. And so we've been, we've implemented that as well. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Mark to talk about our finances a little bit. He's going to give you, actually, the audit report. I've got slides to go along with him, but we'll bring him on up.
All right, thank you. Short and sweet and to a point. It was an interesting and productive audit, as you're quite a few of them. I've only been, what, a couple months in, I'm at the auditors, and we actually created a pretty good relationship. The audit report had three different revisions to the numbers they put in there, just for one reason or another, but now we have the final one. And what ended up happening at the end of the fiscal year of Y2018 is that we had a bottom line of negative $265,027. That actually is an improvement from the prior year of $94,918. We had an 8.3% increase in our revenue and an 8% increase in our expenses. So the revenue netted out at $44 million, and $44 million, and the rounding it off, the expenses at $44 million also. On the asset side of it, we did gain $430,000. On the cash side of it, we did draw up by $2 million. However, on the capital asset side of it, we gained, we took that over and we gained $1.9 million. The other 200 million, or 200,000 went to other expenses. So we just transferred one account to another account. One of the, one of the things I'm always proud of, working for nonprofits, and that's what I've worked through all my years, and that is what the company does for the community. And our charity contribution did increase from $304,000 to $310,000. That's a, I was like, I was really happy to see that increase, even though I didn't have a lot of influence on this, on these financials. We still have the same payer mix that we've always had. We're, right now, we're at about a 20% on the self-pay. This will be on the council receivable side. That's what, right now, is been increasing a little bit because of the transition. That's common, by the way. It usually takes about six to eight months to get that turnaround completed and cleaned up, and then we'll start doing our collections as we've done before. And then we go with Medicare at 24% and Medicaid at 25%. And as I've started learning here in this state, Medicaid is a little bit slow in making their payments. So that's the reason why it's increased, and just recently, it's gone a little higher than just that. With the audit, you start to learn about new GASP rulings that are coming down the path. We had one new one in this last fiscal year. We have two new ones in 2019, which is what we're in right now, and 2022, and then in 2021, two more. And that doesn't mean that others will be add-done to that, but that's what we have. A couple of them are just clarifications to rulings of the past. And then, of course, we have one that, post-employment, this would be with, not only do we have to identify in liability purposes for our retirement people, we also have to identify any other contributions we have to their retirement. This would be like the medical, the medical side of the cost and that side of it. And we did identify the, as you just, was pointed out on the repeated again, we did get $200,000 from the foundation contributing to our, one of our projects. I will say, a lot of the dollars that have moved over in the asset side has to do with those three major projects, plus the two clinics that we've incorporated in our, in our, in our program. And they're actually showing great, great productivity in the, in the visit side.
So, open up some questions?
I don't necessarily have any questions. I know, you know, the challenges of healthcare nowadays, rising costs, medical care, challenges of revenue, obviously, they've been with you for a number of years, they're going to continue to be with you for a number of years. But I continuously am impressed with the running of the hospital. It's one of our greatest assets in Princeton that I think is being run great. And I was glad to see the clinics come back. I think that was a huge plus, so. I don't have any questions. I just think that things are going very well, and I, thank you.
Well, speaking of challenges, I did actually look, seven years prior to me coming, the hospital had an average loss of $871,000 per year, and our average right now is $122,000. So I think we've made a significant gain. We've got a little more games to go, but it is making a difference and really focusing on quality.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mark. Thank you. Okay, we don't have any other regular business, so we'll go to the city manager report.
Okay, I just have two things. First is the monthly financial report, and this is through August of 2018. One thing I'll mention next month, I'll make sure we put page numbers on this, so when I'm referring to something, I can tell you a page number. But overall, we're four months into the fiscal year, and our revenue overall is at 38%, expenses at 35%. So that's about where it should be. Everything's around 40% received or expended. Property taxes are a little higher than that, but that's just because of when the dispersments come. And then when you look at expenses, one thing also to remember is a lot of our large debt payments come in December, so that's when we see a big hit there. But overall, in all the funds, nothing significant to note there. When we look at the graphs, once again, I'll be able to tell you page number next one, but the sales tax for August was higher than, quite a bit higher than the last three years. So that was good news. And then hotel tax was the highest expense in the last four years. The page after that just lists all of our cash and investments. One of the things we're going to be working on after the first of the year is a bank RFP. That's something we're going to work with Butterback and Amen on to go out into a bank RFP right now. You can see most of our funds are with Heartland Central, and then we have one, our electric investment, TD with First State Bank. The page following that is just all of the investments that the city has. The biggest one is the electric, and that's the reserves, and that's, at, sitting at $1.7, $1.8 million. And then we have a couple smaller CDs for the cemetery, the Lovejoy, and the Proudings. And then the last page of the financials just shows all of our current debt. The only thing missing from that is the most recent $450,000 loan that we took out with Central Bank, so that'll be added for next month. But our current debt principal is at $25.8 million and interest at $3 million. And the last page is the monthly financial, or sorry, the monthly calls. So for Buicktown, we had a total, Buicktown had total incoming calls of 3,774. Ninety-six of those were city utility-related. The fire department had 168 calls, and the police department responded to 749 calls, and that is for the month of August. That's all I have on the financial report.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, point out to our long-term debt. You know, three years ago, we were sitting at $40 million, and we're now down to 28, eight, interest, principal and interest, which is a significant drop, and we're headed in the right direction, so good job on that.
And then the only other thing I have is, we finally have the date picked for our electronic recycling event. I have a couple extra wires over there, and I've handed everyone else a wire, but this is free, but it's only for city of Princeton residents. Last year, we were fortunate enough to get a grant, because this is an expensive endeavor for a lot of communities. And last year, we got a grant, and it was open to everyone. However, this year, we have to restrict it. We're partnering with Republic Services on this. They're recently the people that got the transportation, and we went through that sale. So this is October 20th, same place as last year, Perry Plaza, so the same traffic flow will take place there, and it's from 7:00 to 8:00. So the same traffic flow will take place there, and it's from seven to one. It ends promptly at one o'clock. So you have to be through the line by one to drop off your stuff. And then there's a list of the accepted items on there.
Is this going to be manned by Republic or do we need to?
Yeah, we'll help with traffic flow and some barricades and stuff, but they will supply the people.
Any comments? I just have one item. We just came last weekend at our 47th Annual Homestead Festival. And aside from the unfortunate cancellation of our Friday Night Street concert, it was a great success. We had just an incredible number of people in town on Saturday. You know, the Homestead Festival managers and Tracy McCrankey and Rick Clary, the Homestead Festival Committee, Laura and Bill Fabia, Rick, Tim and Amy Smith, and Bob and Christie Warren. They put in the volunteers that they work with, put literally hundreds of hours into this festival, working year-round. So, and they're going to be back at it again here probably just a couple of months. So kudos to them. It was, again, it was a, it was a great weekend. They had a record number of 5K runners. I think it's 289. They had a record number of vendors at the Courthouse Square at 90. So it's just, again, a great weekend, and thank you for all of our work. Any old business? Any new business?
Public comment? Entertained motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene at our next. Moving to adjourn to next meeting and then reconvene for our next council meeting on Monday, October 1st, 2018, 7:00 here at City Hall. What's your second call roll?
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Quirrell. Aye. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.